A family owned shop in Loganville, Soesby's Garage for all your automotive repair needs. We service all makes and models, Ford and domestic. We repair engines, alternators, brakes, alignments, AC systems and more. Using certified technicians with over 90 years of combined experience. We also offer same day service for some repairs. Soesby's Garage, 200 Bay Creek Road in Loganville. Dependable, honest and fair. Look us up on Google or Facebook. We'll take good care of you.
Broadcasting live from the Subaru of Gwinnett Studio inside the Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel. It's time for Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. We are the cornerstone of security in the Southeast.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. I'm your host, Rick Strawn, the President of Paradigm Security Services. We're excited to be with you today on Business Radio X. We're broadcasting live from the Subaru of Gwinnett Studio located in the beautiful Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel in Duluth, Georgia. In addition to Paradigm Security Services, show is also brought to you by Soesby's Garage. And you heard a little clip from them just a minute ago. They are looking for a good certified mechanic. They are really in need. Their business is growing like crazy because they're so honest and they need some good people working for them. On every show, we feature businesses and organizations in the Atlanta area and people, especially those that serve Gwinnett County. While all businesses may have some kind of security issues, not all are about physical security. And we will touch on that and other related aspects of security as we go through the course of our shows. I want to, you know, today, there's so much talk about politics. You got that election coming up soon. You got November coming up. Running on our local elections is really the cornerstone of it. And we've got a lot of people out here that are really good running for office. And I try to help them out by just giving them an opportunity to come on and tell y'all what they think and what how they would work with the issues. Great today, I've got a friend and a fellow businessman in the county, Matthew Holtcamp. And he is running for the Gwinnett County Commissioner, District Four. Matthew, good to have you here.
Well, good morning, Rick.
I keep wanting to call you Matt because that's just what I do. And you keep correcting me because I notice every time I talk to you, you say, this is Matthew.
Matthew, yeah.
But, you know, one of the biggest things that a lot of people, you know, they might know the name, but they probably, I don't know if they really know the person. So in kind of a brief synopsis, who is Matt Holtcamp? Matthew Holtcamp?
Matthew, well, I'm a Beaufort resident. I'm a dad. I'm a husband of a crazy redhead wife Suzanne. You know, I just love this community. I just was drawn here when I was 19 years old. But Matthew Holtcamp, I'm a very independent competitive business owner, heating and air contractor. You know, it's a very crowded space out there in my world.
Yes, it is.
And so when I was first getting started, was extremely competitive in those early years. Now I'm much more of a helper, I would say. You know, I like to find the younger businesses and help them get through some of those early hoops. Because I think it benefits everybody and I've learned that it benefits the industry. If I could turn back the clock, I would probably not be quite so darn competitive and be a little more helpful.
Yeah.
But I'm trying to make up for that now. I serve on the state construction industry licensing board. Just had a board meeting this morning and you just try to help people get their licenses, you know, get all their ducks in a row so that they can get properly licensed.
And I can tell you from having to be licensed with the state myself and I've had, my family history was in the plumbing industry. And I can tell you when you have to go through that state board and you've got all the boxes to check and all the certs to get and it can be a challenge. Sometimes you just get lost in all the paperwork.
Right.
So it's great that you're willing to help them.
Right, and it helps the citizens. They probably don't recognize that as much, but to have properly licensed businesses that are doing everything honestly, ethically and safely. You know, that's a big part of licensing is that everything's done safely.
Absolutely.
You know, when's the last time you heard of someone dying from carbon monoxide poisoning in Georgia? You know, it's because we have a really strong licensing program here.
It's usually when they're sitting in their car, not their house.
Yeah, not their house. I can't even remember the last time that's happened. And they've had licensing ever since I've gotten in the business.
Well, you know, it's great to bring people along. I know one of the, I know you come from like what Iowa?
Yeah, Iowa.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you got to Georgia?
Yeah, so grew up on a farm and in 1984, when I graduated high school, at the time, we were in the middle of a farm crisis. And so I knew I didn't want to be a farmer, but I knew that you had to have a trade, that you had to, you know, find some direction. And so we had a fairly close community college called Indian Hills. It was in Otma, Iowa. So the same day that I left to go to college, which they had dorms there, was the same day that our farm was lost to a bank. We were, we, my family had to move out of the house the same day I was moving out to go to college. And so that was very tough times. But, you know, I wouldn't be where I am today if I hadn't gone through that because it wasn't just that one day event. It was four years leading up to that and just living off of food stamps and living on nothing and watching every penny. I think was really what made me as successful as I am today because I learned how to, how to use money wisely.
Think about it and work from the ground up.
Yeah. I mean, when I would be balancing my checkbook, it would be down to the $1 would be all I'd have left.
Been there.
And so talk about learning how to manage money when you had to account for every tiny little thing. So anyway, one of my classmates was from Lillburn, Georgia. He had moved when he was like in middle school up to Iowa because his dad got a job up there. And he had, he was bound and determined to move back down. So I, he was the only person I'd ever met in my life up to that point that was not from Iowa. And so I just called him up and said, are there any jobs down here? Because again, back in Iowa, there were no jobs. The John Deere plant had just closed and they were all looking for work. So for a 19 year old kid, they didn't want us, you know, they wanted the 40 year old guys who had families to, you know, feed. So down I came. They, he had, I'd sent a resume to him and he gave it to his boss and they hired me. So I had a job here before I'd left Iowa. And so I did have that going for me.
Well, that, you know, and that's good. You know, I guess like the plumbing trade, you know, you correct me if I'm wrong. You have, then do you have things like workmen where the journeyman work into the masters and all that? Is that, does that happen in?
You know, it's not as specific like in the union world. But like when you get your licensing, there's definitely all those same questions are asked that you've gone through those steps and you have to prove that you did. But we don't have journeyman and it's not nearly as structured as plumbing, but yeah.
Well, what you do, it doesn't require like a four year college. It requires something more of a Gwinnett tech type, industry type college and so. I think that's a, that's a great example because one of the things that, you know, I think that a lot of kids get lost in is that everybody wants you to go to a four year school. And then get four years more. And by the time you put eight, 10, 12 hour years into the college, you've got so much debt, you can't ever get out of it. And sometimes it gives you a good career, sometimes it doesn't, you know? So I think that it's great that, you know, these young people can understand that you can have a great career and maybe even own a company in the heating and air industry. That you don't really have to go to a four year college and accrue the debt. You can go to work, learn the basics and then go to work for someone like you, learn the trade and then start working on getting it there, getting your license.
Yeah, a lot of our licensed applicants don't have a college, even a technical degree. That's not even really required, but it definitely, it makes, it gives you a foundation. I always recommend it because it gives you a solid foundation to build upon.
Gives you a little discipline as well, you know, going through that and having to do stuff and having timetables and all that kind of stuff. Well, you know, you've got a lot of things going on for you here. Why in the, why in the world would you want to delve into the world of politics? I mean, you've got a nice business, you've got a nice family, you've got a nice home, I'm sure.
Right.
Everything's going great for you and you've got the contacts, you're helping people, you're really, you're rocking in your business.
Right.
And did you want to go into politics?
Well, that's a very good question. My wife would ask me that question a lot in those early times. So what, the way that it worked was, the way, when my business had grown enough to where I would, had worked out all of the, the policies and procedures and just the day to day. And I was able to step back, I got an operations manager. We finally grew enough to where I could afford a guy that would just manage the setting out.
Make it run.
Yeah, make it run, the ordering the jobs, all that monotonous time, you know, intensive stuff, that was part of that job. And I could finally start giving back to the community. What, what did I want to do? And first was at Gwinnett Tech. And so I started serving on the board there. Well, first way that worked was I started giving scholarships and then they saw that I wanted to give you, start giving back to young people. And then they, they invited me to be a part of the board. And then they, after four years serving on the board, they asked me to be the chairman. So then I was the chairman for two years and then at six years I termed off. And then it was like, well, what do I want to do next? And that's when I got invited to be on the licensing board or I was recommended and started giving back to the industry even more. So it was all focused on HVAC and giving back and wanting to give opportunities to other young people to own their own business and provide for their families. I mean, just there's so many benefits as an individual to be able to build something for your family and for your legacy. And so that's really what I was focused on. And then one day I was at the 1818 Club, you know, they have, on Wednesday nights, they have that like networking thing and Sammy Baker was there. So if you know Sammy Baker.
Yeah, dude.
So I, I'm a believer, I'm a Christian and, and I see the Holy Spirit works through all of us. And sometimes it's the most innocuous, innocent conversation that the Holy Spirit can be speaking to you through. And that day Sammy Baker said, Matthew, Gwinnett County needs your help and we need you to get involved in politics.
He has a way to convince people to do things that they don't necessarily know they want to do.
Right, so a lot of times I'll share that Sammy Baker is really the reason, but he invited me to be a part of the Gwinnett GOP. Now I hadn't knew that it existed, vaguely, maybe once or twice, but because I was so focused in building my business, I really didn't give it a lot of attention. But the Gwinnett GOP really needed help with more engagement, more, you know, just people to help, just like anything. And so I said, sure Sammy, whatever you need. He says, well, all right, I'll let you know. And next thing you know, one thing leads to the other.
The next day.
And then I, but I will say, I truly didn't understand. I was just saying, yes, Sammy, whatever you need, just let me know. You know, because people ask for help all the time and usually it's just a quick, do one or two things and you're helping us.
It's the servant's heart.
Yeah. And what Sammy really wanted was a long-term commitment, but it was all good. And then I got elected to the executive board. And then I saw that, that need for candidates, for people to step forward. And there just aren't as many as you'd think that there are.
People nowadays have a problem doing that because everybody has something in their closet. It may be small, it may be big, may, may, you know, whatever it is. And politics has a tendency to where that's all they want to focus on. And it, people, people that have businesses and careers, a lot of times, they would love to get involved, they do want to get involved, but they just say, you know, it's not worth it. And it's, it's awesome when somebody like yourself says, you know, every bit of it's worth it.
Right. So to back up just a little bit, I had a goal that by the time I was 50 years old, I wanted to be financially independent. Where if I went to work, it was because I chose to go to work, not because I had to. And I had achieved that goal. And so in 2017, I went through Leadership Gwinnett to say, what do I want to do next? Because I, I really didn't have a plan for once I met that goal. I hate to admit it, I'm a very goal centric person, but I didn't really know what I was going to do when I hit that, that mark. Because, you know, you can only vacation so much. And so I went through Leadership Gwinnett and I met all the decision makers, all the department heads. We, you know, it's a year long program.
It's a great program.
Great program, meet so many people and.
2014 here.
Yeah. 2017 was the best class ever, as they say.
2014, I understand.
So anyway, after I went through Leadership Gwinnett, that's when I started looking more at the county. So when Sammy asked me to do that, it all kind of fell into place. It was, it was weird how people said that they, they saw my direction was leading towards politics, but I didn't even recognize it until I got on that executive board and started seeing. And I'm more of a, you've got to realize, I grew up on a farm in a small area. The nearest town only had 13 population, the next nearest town had 100 population. And I talk about this on my website where in the small town that the people don't like, that everybody knows your business.
Yeah.
But, but the crazy thing is, is that the good thing about a small town is that everyone knows your business. So when you need help, help is always there because everybody knows when you, when you need it. So even though I moved to Georgia in this big area, to me at my heart, I, I don't feel like I'm here or I'm a resident unless I go to the grocery store and I see somebody I know. And I'll tell you, every time I go to the grocery store, I see somebody I know, mainly because they're customers, you know?
Well, you know, regardless, it's people that you build relationships with and that's what business is. You build relationships, that's what builds a business. And you are a great relationship builder. So people remember you, you remember, what's amazing part is you generally remember them.
Yeah.
So that, that's what helps.
Yeah, probably one of my biggest strategic advantages in this race is that for 25 years, I've marketed primarily to a five zip code area. Because I always believed that, that you shouldn't have to drive all over metro Atlanta to get business. So we really focused all of our marketing in a five zip code area. Well, ironically, that same area is District Four.
That's just, God works in mysterious ways, doesn't he?
Yeah, so for 20 years, I've been, you know, been in and out of these houses thousands of times, you know? Think about it, for 20 years, I was in the truck, running the calls with the guys, doing the training, just constantly out in the community of the same place that I'm representing, you know?
Some of the voters, not only that, but the kids of the voters that are now the voters too. They've all grown up knowing who Matthew Holtcamp was with the air conditioning guy.
Exactly, and the hot sauce guy.
Yeah, the hot sauce guy. That is good hot sauce, by the way. We still got a half a bottle, we're running, oh, by the way, Ed said to tell you, he needed some more hot sauce.
Okay, very good, yes, I'll bring some up.
But, but you know, that's the awesome thing, it's the building relationships. And the only way you build relationships is through integrity and through honesty, doing what you say you're going to do, when you say you're going to do it. And that's something that just has a tendency to be very lacking in our political world right now. Is people with integrity. And, you know, you coming into it, I think you feel like that you're bringing that back into your, your business, you're, you're running on that.
Right. You know, it's interesting, as I look more and more into this commissioner's seat, it really ought to be a connector, in my opinion. Because you're really, it's, you're helping the community, you're bringing people that are in need of something. You're like, how, what's the key person that can actually solve that problem, whatever it is? If it's traffic or if it's public safety or whatever. You know, you yourself can't personally do that, but you've got to know the people that can.
And how to facilitate that.
Right, and to make it happen. And so, you know, I think the biggest job of a commissioner is actually zoning and working with developers and then homeowners groups that are like fighting against it.
Against the development.
Right.
Or for it.
Right, or for or against and you've got to be that middle man that, that keeps the conversations calm. And I think I'm pretty good at that.
Finds the way to meet in the middle.
Right, exactly. You know.
What a concept. Have you thought about telling the national politicians about that meet the middle thing?
Yeah, exactly. One of my Leadership Gwinnett classmates, Angela Duncan, she, she's heads over divorce court. And she says, Matthew, I'm successful if both people leave equally upset, you know?
And don't kill each other.
I would say as a commissioner, your job probably ought to be to make each side equally happy.
Yeah.
You know?
We would want to make them equally upset. Oh, well, curiosity, you, you have kind of a slogan there. It's called people over politics. How'd you come up with that?
Well, it just so happened that when I was making this final decision, that was right at the time where it was almost through the state house on the redistricting lines for county commissioners. And I had been told by several of my fellow Rotarians that were former commissioners that, you know, Matthew, it's not really Republican or Democrat in the, you know, Board of Commissioners. It really doesn't, it's, it's way below that, it's more local, you know, zoning stuff, it's not politics. And, but then I saw during that process, all the politics, it was pretty dirty.
There's politics in all of it.
Yeah. And I was like, wow, he was totally wrong. And there are a lot of politics in this and this really should be about people. And, and they had no representation on the conservative side. It was five Democrats, zero Republicans, and they were fighting tooth and nail. The Democrat delegation was just fighting every step of the way, trying to keep conservative voices on that Board of Commissioners. And so I was like, people over politics sounds like really what we need to get to our citizens is that it's not about the politics. We need to go above politics and just take care of our community.
I think the people are too often forgotten in politics.
Right.
It's all about the power of the politics.
Right, which is what it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
You know?
Who can, what can I do for myself in the long run and my constituents in the, in the even longer run? But more important, you know, you should be more about the people that you're trying to serve. What is it they want and how do I best help them? And you, and that's what you've been talking about since we started this thing is you enjoy helping people.
Right.
So it just keys right into the people over politics. That's, that's a good slogan.
So that's where that theme came from and, and I'm going to stick with it because I don't have higher aspirations of going further into politics, but you know, you never know.
You never know.
You never know what the.
Sammy hasn't knocked on your door yet again.
Right, you never know how the Holy Spirit might call me, but for right now, that's kind of where I was trying to go from that, bringing it back to my small town upbringing. It's like I, I'm still at, at my core, a small town kid. That's kind of how I see myself and when I meet someone, I try to meet them one-on-one and just listen to what they, what their cares and concerns are. And try to bring that back and I'm always trying to build people up, tell them that things are not quite as tough as they are, that you can overcome this or that and.
Well, and you're always using that rather interesting quirky sense of humor you've got. You're always, you're always getting somebody to laugh. And that's a good thing. We don't laugh enough, to tell you the truth nowadays.
That's true, and I think we overcomplicate it and overthink things. You know, as a small business owner, you're about actionable stuff. You know, sometimes you can have, I forget the saying, but it's where you can overanalyze things to where.
Analysis paralysis.
There you go. And so I would rather try something and fail than to not try at all. And that's, that's sort of how I, I would say I've reached this level of success is because I've, I've tried everything, you know? And, and I've, I've just tried to expand on the things that worked.
Well, a lot of people will tell you, especially people in business, if you've never failed at anything, you're probably not doing real good in business.
Right.
Because you, it's a matter of, you learn from the mistakes. If you don't try anything and you don't fail at it, how do you know to try something different?
Exactly.
How do you know what really works? And I don't believe for one second anybody has never tried anything that didn't work.
Right.
It's just, it doesn't happen, especially in business, with the way things are thrown at us today.
Yep.
What concerns you the most about where our current, current board is going? Because there's, there's a lot of issues there that could be addressed.
Well, I know that they've received a lot of funding from the federal government because of this pandemic. And so I just know through Leadership Gwinnett, through my involvement in various nonprofits in the county, that there's definitely been a move towards the county taking over a lot of the social services. The social safety net, you might say. And so that's a concern that, that there's like an expansion of social services and trying to put themselves into that homeless conversation or people that. And we don't see a lot of homeless on the streets, but we see, the county considers anyone staying in an extended stay hotel as a homeless person. And so they're trying to overcome that problem. But exactly how are they going to expand our social services in Gwinnett County? And I don't think that the county should put itself in that place, that I, I think we should lean on our robust nonprofit networks that we have, which are extremely well-run. And so if it's just because it's a case of a bunch of federal money coming into Gwinnett County and we need to spend it and help people that are still hurting from the pandemic. Then as a commissioner, I would be, my focus would be to get us back out of that and push it back towards the nonprofits, supporting them if they need to grow a little bit. Because you know, Gwinnett County is growing, our problems grow with our, our county. And so it's how do you address that? But as a business person, I would say, we've already got this whole structure of nonprofits out there. Can they fill that space and just get the government back out of the social services?
Well, one of the biggest problem that I've seen over my lifetime is when the government gets involved in the social services, they don't get out.
Right.
It becomes an expectation, it becomes an entitlement and people don't want to give it up.
Right.
Government gets too much in the business of giving a handout instead of a hand up.
Right.
And that's what your nonprofits try to do is they try to help people out of that situation.
Yeah, say Melanie Connor over at Rainbow Village in Duluth and you've got Maureen Corcinoa.
Right, she does great.
You know, those are two great models that the county could say, okay, let's say if they can't build it up big enough, then let's find a new executive director for a new group. But I just think the government shouldn't be there because like you said, those organizations exist to help that person, give them the studies that they need, give them the financial literacy, you know, just.
To get out of it.
Yeah, to get out of it, to help them through that chapter in their life and overcome that problem.
And government generally, when they do that, they tend to want to keep them there because that's equivalent to voting and everything else. It's really a negative, it's a serious negative. And that's, you know, something our county, as it grows, we got to get out of that. I totally agree with you.
Right.
The, now, what are the boundaries of District Four? I think people, that would help some of these people that are listening and on a future broadcast, what it is.
Right, that's one of the challenges I have in my run is because.
You don't know.
It's all.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, it's all new.
Yeah, they have changed.
They've changed substantially, yeah. So the new District Four, think of it as the catty corner from the Gwinnett Medical Center, now Northside Medical at, there's a Home Depot there at 316 120 in Lawrenceville Swannie Road. There's that Home Depot, that's, think of that as a southernmost point. So if we go northwest into Swannie, once it goes to Swannie Town Center, Lawrenceville Swannie Road, you would turn left and go south on Beaufort Highway down to McGinnis Ferry Road. And then that, you'd turn right and go to the Chattahoochee River. Then you would follow the Gwinnett County border all the way up to say Beaufort Dam and then down over to Chateau Alon and then down to, almost to 316, just to the east of DeCula.
That's a big district.
It's huge. It's larger than a senate district, larger than a congressional district, has 225 to 230,000 people in it. And then it does go north of the DeCula city limits, so it doesn't go exactly down 316, but essentially down 316 back to that Home Depot.
Just west of it?
Of DeCula.
Of 316? I mean, not west of it, be north, north of it?
Yeah, everything north of 316. But once it gets by DeCula, it actually does take this, the precinct goes above the city limits of DeCula. So it's not actually the city limits of DeCula and then over to Auburn, all the way up, follows that line.
That is a very big district.
Yeah, so it's going to take a lot of signs and a lot of money to run. You know, that was one of my arguments for, and again, going back to the people over politics, you know, there was a debate about adding a couple of extra commissioned districts because it is so big. That it's not really achievable for the average citizen to run for a commissioner. You would, it is just such a big district that I was saying it's out of reach for the average citizen. And fortunately, I've been blessed with, with my business in a way, in context to where I'll be able to raise the money to, to get out there. That's why I did that.
One of the things that the commission has done or the county has done is to purchase that big area around the Gwinnett Place Mall, which I'm so glad they got it away from Moonbeam. Maybe we can finally, eventually, hopefully get something developed.
Right.
What are your thoughts on that?
Well, would that place mall?
Mall itself.
Right, so they've, they've got a couple of studies that they've pushed out for that. And so they're waiting to get those studies back. But I would say that, you know, that wasn't just an overnight decision to buy that mall. And I'm actually quite surprised that we're behind the eight ball in getting that place redeveloped. You know, that should have been done two years ago, you know, and here we are, finally, we're still waiting for this study to come back. And when it does come back, you know, how exactly are they going to interpret that?
Will the studies still be current? I mean, if it takes so long to do?
Yeah, exactly. So I'm a little disappointed in, in our current commissioners for why they're still figuring that out. But in any case, when those studies do come back, we've got to be able to make some good logical decisions on how that's going to be developed. And it seems like they're asking for input from every community member, which is fine on the surface, but also sometimes, you know, decisions have to be made.
Analysis paralysis.
Exactly. I mean, it's like, come on, people. You got Cobb County's got that new, you know. Exactly. I mean, it's like, come on people. You got Cobb County's got that new, uh, you know, stadium. Nor Fulton's got all kinds of development going on and, and over here, it's, it's analysis by paralysis.
Well, Gwinnett Place Mall is basically, uh, but we do a patrol in that area and I've, you know, been down there for years. That is basically the heart of Gwinnett. I mean, it's right there. That's just the, where the heartbeat is. There's more stuff around the Gwinnett Place CID. And that involvement there, uh, in that area, as far as business, life, I mean, it, it's the heartbeat.
Yeah.
And for that to develop, uh, we could put the Mall of Georgia to shame as a matter of fact, if you really develop that area because there is, I mean, you can't ask Pleasant Hill, the, the expressway, you're right there in the middle of it.
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a prime, all the arteries go right through there, you know?
Oh yeah. It could be another big transformational, um, iconic.
It could be an Avalon.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, something of that nature.
Exactly. And so it seems like, um, when they did put that study out, I was actually very concerned because here, one of the things that I talked about at my, my campaign kickoff last week was how I think Gwinnett County is very transparent and you can look at all their agendas, you can watch, you know, all their pre, past meetings. I mean, you can really get down into the weeds. I think they have, Gwinnett County has great transparency in government. But the problem we have, I think, is that we don't have enough, um, news sources that actually cover all that stuff. So like, there was an article that came out that they awarded that contract, but nowhere in the article did it say that it was the highest bidder. You know, they, they didn't talk about what their, their, uh, reasons for choosing that contractor and why they went with the highest bidder. You know, they, there, it's almost like the questions aren't being asked or they're not being reported. You know, and so I just think that our county really needs a more thorough public source of information.
They need to get it thoroughly vetted.
Yeah.
And hiding behind of the non-transmission of, of, uh, communications is not a good way to do it.
Right. And so what I'm trying to get to is that sometimes it makes you wonder if the contractors that won, win some of these bids aren't done on purpose. You know, and so it's almost like they want to, they want to know what the answer is before they even ask it. So that's why, why I say that I need to be on that commission board as that, that, uh, business-minded conservative voice that can make the arguments for some of the stuff that they're trying to put into this new development and that it really should be about the community and also about commerce and about, you know, keeping the small businesses coming into that area and growing.
And we talked about it before we went on that, you know, buying, bringing some big business and all that kind of stuff is great for the county, but where your county's lifeblood flows is your small business.
Exactly. Yeah. It may not make the headlines, you know, the big business when, uh, say Partnership Gwinnett brings in some new huge company or like we have Rowan that's going to be coming in out there near Auburn and DeCula.
Right.
You know, and all these things are good, but, uh, I mean, they won't even come even close to the impact of small business. And so.
Totally get it. One last question for you. What is your platform for your candidacy?
Well, my big thing that I noticed even in Leadership Gwinnett was that they, they kind of follow the same model of the first heating air, air company that I worked for when I came to Georgia. Uh, so I won't say what the name of the company is, but they, they had this business model where you hire guys straight out of tech school so that you don't have to pay them much. And then you know that within two or three years they're going to be gone and you just constantly churn through the new guys because you know you're going to have, you're not going to spend as much money on, on the, on their salaries, right? On, on their hourly rate. Well, it seems like Gwinnett County Police does the same thing. It's, uh, when I was at Gwinnett Tech, they had a great criminal justice program over there. And in fact, the guy that I rode with for the day was a graduate of Gwinnett Tech. And, uh, and recently I had somebody take out my mailbox. They got in, um, went out of control and the police came just, this was probably about a couple of months ago. And they told me the same thing is still going on where pretty much everybody just works there a couple of years and then they go and work for Barrow County or Hall County or just local ones because Gwinnett County is known to have the best training of any county. But why don't they pay? You know? I, I knew when I started my company that I didn't want to have that business model. I want to be able to pay the guys the best so that I don't have all the turnover. You know, that was, that was one of the things. If you stayed at any of these companies for more than three years, you were in the top seniority of, of the thing, but you were, you knew you could make more money if you just left and went somewhere else. You know, and I don't think Gwinnett County should be doing that. We should pay our guys what they need to be paid so they don't jump all over the place and we can get some good tenured police officers that are experienced, that don't make basic mistakes and, and know, know their communities, know the people in the community and they serve us better.
That was the same way, um, I went through the city of Atlanta a lot of years ago, but, um, you know, it's always been known to have one of the top academies. Uh, people would go there, they would go to the Atlanta Police Academy. Then the first thing you know, they'd be here a year or two years and they're out the same where else, just like what's happening now. Because it has, the county here in Gwinnett has advanced so much on their training. It's just, it's an awesome training facility.
Right.
And curriculum.
Yeah. And so, so getting on top of that and, um, keeping down crime, we, we recently had, um, one of our catalytic converters stole out of one of our spare vans at the office. You know, we've had some break-ins. It's like, we, we need to actually have good, solid police force. And at that time, they needed 800 officers and they were like, um, at that time, this is again, going back in 2017, they were 160 short at that time at my.
They're still short.
Yeah. And so that's a big problem, I think, that needs to be fixed.
Well, and we've got to have, in order to do that, there's going to have to be a change in the support system behind them. Because right now, uh, people don't want to go into that field because they're not supported. And I used to tell the people that worked for me when I was working with the police departments that, you know, back when I worked there in the beginning, you know, they would tell you, you have a target on your back from the bad guy. By the time I left and especially today, you've got a target on your back by the good end of bad guys. So you've got to, I mean, people just get tired of it. They get burned real quick. Matthew, I appreciate you being here. This has been a great conversation.
Thank you so much.
I wish you all the luck in District Four.
Thank you.
We need some good conservative voices out there and some, even more important, some good business voices out there helping us run our county because that's a business.
Yes, it is.
And if people don't focus on it as a business, you lose all perspective of where we're going as we grow.
Exactly.
Now, if somebody wants to get involved in your campaign or help you out or anything, how do they get in touch with you?
So our website is www dot MatthewForGwinnett dot com. And, uh, just go on there and there's three different ways, you know, you can sign up to, um, be a, a, a door knocker or, you know, to, um, have a sign out at your place to donate. There's, uh, all the different ways you can help right on our website.
And you don't have to live in that district to put, you know, to help.
That's right. So, yeah.
Well, I want to tell you everybody, thank you for joining us on Case in Point, presented on Parrot by Paradigm Security Services and in part by Sosby's Garage. Be sure to join us for the live broadcast every other Wednesday at 11:30 AM here on Business Radio X. If you miss the live broadcast, no worries. You can enjoy the show anytime you want to by visiting Gwinnett Business Radio X, selecting the Gwinnett Studio and then clicking on, of course, Case in Point. This program is also available on iTunes, iHeartRadio, Spotify, really wherever you enjoy your favorite podcasts. It's on a many, many streams. Please be sure to subscribe to that, uh, Case in Point by hitting that subscribe button on there so you don't miss on any of our future episodes. For my guests, Matthew Holtcamp and my producer, Mike. Remember, I'm Rick Strawn and remember at Paradigm Security Services, we cover more than just your assets.